Being at six o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order. And we'll start with the approval of the minutes of October sixteenth. You have them in our pocket. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I think as usual, they were well done. I didn't see any issues and I would move, we accept them as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, comments or corrections on the minute? Thing now? Go ahead.
On page four, slide one fifty. I don't know if it was just like a typo, but the phrase was on the right side of it. Like we can open them.
The one fifty?
Yeah, page four, line one fifty.
Mr. Russell expressed his hesitance.
Please.
To accept feedback of a corporation for private public use of the policy.
Is private public use like a, sorry, is it?
He will come victory, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Just private use?
Why, I don't know what my exact words were, but I mean, the overall theme is correct. I express hesitance to take feedback from a private corporation for public policy.
Ah, there you go.
There, let's do it.
That makes perfect sense.
That might be.
Isn't the word hesitant? Hesitant? Well, no hesitant words.
And did you get that? Okay. Perfect. All right. John, are you willing to amend your motion?
Certainly am.
Okay, and I'm sorry, the second was being not remembered. Second, are you willing to obviously amend your thinking? Good. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Alright.
Opposed? Abstentions, it passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, board reports. Eric, we're starting with you again, because you keep on sitting there.
Since the last meeting, the TIP committee has had the meeting. And that's going quite well. Rob has started drafting cohesive documents around it. And the discussion was around what projects that were already approved by town meetings should be continued, should be a part of the new plan and potentially projects to be added. Rob and Ed are sort of drafting that list for our next meeting. But we've been planning to have something ready for town meeting this year to be adopted so that we can get the tip.
Just a quick note that TIP has not turned any meeting minutes in for the last two.
Okay. We will listen.
Alex?
Okay. So Eva met October twenty fifth and discussed their upcoming holiday decorations on Main Street. And will be decorating starting at ten AM on November eighteenth headquartered at the Laundromat, thanks to Brian Deggman. There was some discussion that maybe you had said something about being able to use a truck or getting some assist from a truck. I think the, I haven't been part of this before, but the plan sounds like a ladder on the bridge.
I think that's what they use. I don't know that we have a truck for that, but we could possibly get some town staff to help with the light pole or two that are a little dangerous for people to put stuff up.
Because I wasn't going to volunteer. I was like, I don't know if you guys should be doing it either.
November eighteen, maybe I'll volunteer.
No, yes.
No, no OSHA violations either.
No.
You seem how I work.
Yes, I have. That's why I said that.
Someone who feels confident. So that's November eighteenth at ten AM. Heritage Commission met October twenty sixth and discussed the delay of planning for a preservation forum this winter due to competing priorities. They're on the hunt for a historic marker that is missing from the community Lutheran Church. And I seem to be spearheading that effort. And they discussed ongoing questions about how historic preservation will be incorporated in the master plan. That's all I got.
And since I'll be the big media on the community Lutheran Church one. We, we know where the marker went in the first instance when it fell down about five years ago. So if it's not in the Eva office, at this point, my suggestion to Heritage is that they find a way to replace it.
Yeah.
Yeah, rather than. Rather than, you know, hunt around and everyone getting upset. I think if it's gone, it's gone. We'll just have to get replaced.
Yeah. Thank you.
John?
The Budget Committee met with the Select Board on October twenty sixth hearing of, and most of you were there. So this is a little redundant probably. Does anyone really want to hear this?
I think we're good unless somebody has a question for you.
No.
Okay, I think we're good. It was a good meeting.
Yes.
And the responses we got from other communities were apparently quite good. We got a lot of responses. And, you know, we're thinking of going to a twelve step scale in the future, something along those lines that many of our positions are below sort of market value, except for, for public works at this point. And so I guess our, our challenge still is to bring things up to sort of parity with the Upper Valley in, in general. So that we're not losing excess number of employees to other communities.
Crazy.
We met as an energy committee and I had hoped not to give anything tonight because my fellow committee members were supposed to be here, but they're not.
No, we're going to reschedule that.
No, I knew that. I knew that, to be honest. And I don't want to steal their thunder. They had a report on the solar array here at the DPW on the, on the salt sheds. And also a report on the community power, which has of course been very successful for folks. And communities are just screaming to join that now that they realize the savings throughout the state. It is predicted that community power, if not already, will quickly be the second largest purchaser of power in the state. And other towns are just screaming over it, including Canaan. So we'll look forward to their report when it happens. And I'll leave the CIP report to either you or Dan. Somebody want to give a CIP report?
Not really.
Okay.
You can give it to our manager one if you want.
Yeah, we can, we'll talk about a lot of it during the fire truck.
Okay. Good.
Let's do that. Conservation Commission met and approved an amount that they were going to donate to the Cardigan Mountain Highlanders via Upper Valley Trails, I believe. And so it's, they're donating an amount because Craig, who is our trail master, is essentially leading this as kind of a non-stipend gift to trail folks. And that's going pretty well. They've completed most of the work they anticipated getting done for this year. And next year, there's money built into the budget. So looking at a more structured way of taking care of our trail system. And that was really the majority of the meeting, other than Ed Recki voluntarily explained his culvert project to the committee. So that's all I have. Anybody have any questions amongst each other for board reports?
So Craig, the trail master, I think he came to the last Eva Business Coffee and handed out a flyer, like if anyone wants to get involved. That was really good. I think he, I mean, he seems to be doing a good job of making himself visible, but I think he should continue to do so because I think people are really excited to be part of that effort.
Yes, and there was a really, he put a really nice report into the November newsletter. So if folks haven't had a chance to read it, that's in there. And thank you, Lisa, for putting in very nice links to the graphic. So nice to see the conservation team doing some great work.
A reminder that we are looking for volunteers for the trail work. So you can contact us at Town Hall if you need anything and we can get you in touch with the right people.
Oh, and I gave them the, I exported the four people in the form for them. I guess they didn't have them, so, but probably had to ask. So I was like, I can do that. But they could, I told them they can also ask you guys. Let's move on to town managers' report.
All right. So as normal, I'll start with the staff report. So the Enfield Police Department continues to work through the hiring process. Since we've started the non-certified bonus program, we have received applications. And one of those applications is a candidate that's looking very promising and he's moving through the process. We're entering into the, the background check portion, which is usually the toughest portion to get through. But Chief Holland seems to be fairly confident that, that we're, we're headed in the right direction with this candidate. So that's, that's been good. To stay on a police note, a little bit off staffing, but the police right now are working on their annual mental health evaluations. I don't know how much the Select Board knows, but annually Chief Holland runs all of his officers through a mental health evaluation with a professional just to, to make sure things are going well. And that program and the emphasis that we put on that has, has gained a little bit of recognition. So the New England Coalition of Law Enforcement Mental Health has recognized the town of Enfield and their work in mental health for officers. And so it was just a, a good thing they're using our community as a model for some of the other bigger communities on things they can do. And they've actually asked Chief Holland to come speak at, at some events to, to talk about that. So it's good to see Enfield highlighted and.
And Enfield will just noted to be the eighth safest community in the state of New Hampshire.
Down a little bit.
Not much, only from seven. But that's, that's due to their efforts.
Yeah, no, they've done a really good job.
It's a national recognition and Enfield was named.
And I haven't looked into that, but I mean, the lack of staffing a little bit could have been a determinant to that. With that back to staffing, DPW is now accepting applications for cemetery grounds maintainer, a winter seasonal plow truck operator. And we have received a resignation from our janitor building specialist. So they are releasing that soon. We'll be rehiring for that position. DPW has made an offer of unemployment that's been accepted for a water operator who does have the appropriate certifications. And we'll be starting on November thirteenth. So we're, we're happy to welcome them aboard.
Great.
I'd like to thank Kevin Marker and the staff and volunteers that helped with the trunk retreat. It was a well organized event that was very well attended and I think enjoyed by pretty much everybody that was there. A modest event. Whitney Hall groundbreaking. I'd like for you guys to tentatively put on your calendars on the afternoon of December eighth. That's a Friday afternoon. We're looking at doing some sort of little ceremony, probably up in the theater, third floor area. And, and kind of kicking off the Whitney Hall project, which is slated to begin December eleventh, the next Monday. We should be moved out of the building by then. We're starting our move December fourth through the eighth with Enfield Custom Moving. And we're hoping that everything's out of the building by the eighth and we're set up. And as you guys know, we released in the newsletter and let you guys know that we were planning on closing Town Hall for that, that week while we're, while we're moving. We plan to open again December eleventh in the Losolup buildings. But if everything goes smoothly, we may be able to open a day or two early. We'll just see how the move, how the move goes. But the plan right now is to be closed for that week. The library will be closing for the Thanksgiving holiday coming this month. And then they're going to stay closed through the holiday season and open again in 2024. So give them a little bit of time to, I guess they think they need time to unpack 20,000 books.
That's, that's a lot of books.
Actually, they're not unpacking all them. Or I've been working with them a lot on how we're going to stage those on the second floor. And I think they're planning on unpacking about two to three thousand of the most common books. And then they'll be shuttling up and down and getting the, the books that people need as we move forward.
Not, no intent to tell them how to do their job, but I think a lot of folks in town might not know they're permitted to go to Canaan and elsewhere. Most libraries will happily let residents in. So if anybody's feeling like they don't have a book to snuggle with at Christmas, they could probably get one in our neighboring towns without any trouble. Be a good thing to remind people of in an upcoming newsletter.
And we do have electronic media that you can check out, which will still be available.
It is not very snuggly to snuggle your kid.
Sleep with my phone all the time.
But I try not to tell people that in public.
I do want to update the, the Select Board that we received word from Kinberg Properties that they are walking away from the development at the Lucroy property. After doing their survey work and looking at some things, the difficulty of gaining access off a floor in that area was just more than they wanted to try to deal with for, for that project. So with that, I guess I'm not totally removing it, but I'm pulling the urban compact discussion back so we can focus on the projects we have, but it may be something that we need to talk to in the future. We did talk a little bit at the TIP committee about maybe identifying some of those hard access problems with developable property. And that might be something worthwhile with some TIP money to see if we can, we can find ways to improve that access and, and open those properties up a little bit more. We will be sending out an email and some information, but we received the new tax rate today. We've been working over the last week with the RA to try to get that set appropriately. And the new tax rate has been set at townwide at $27.16, which is an increase of 5.5%. And the municipal tax rate was set at eight point six, eight dollars and sixty-four cents, an increase of 15.66%. This was on the low end of the projection that we sent the town meeting. And if I read that to you, it's what we put in the town report, said we estimate the municipal portion of the 2022 tax rate to do be between eight point six four or eight dollars sixty-four cents, which is exactly what it was, and eight dollars and seventy-two cents per thousand of assessed valuation. This represents an estimated increase of 15.63%, which it ended up being 15.66%. So it was pretty close to the low end of what we were, what we were looking at. And we worked pretty hard over the last week to make sure it was there. So. And then I'd just like to update you on a few things going on in the DPW. Pumps are being installed right now for upcoming pump tests on the new wells this Thursday. DES has issued a temporary groundwater discharge permit for this testing period. You guys may have noticed that Maple Street was shimmed last week at the paving company. They were able to come in and do the shim for us, but they did not have time to do the final wearing coat on top. So they'll be back in the spring to, to put a wearing coat over the top of that. So we, we received some FEMA disaster aid for the Christmas storm in the amount of nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Then I would like to extend another thanks to Chief Holland, Jim Taylor, Jeremy Clay, and then along with some partners across Grafton County. After we were notified that FEMA did not include Grafton County in the July storms, they went back to work, put some more numbers together. I know I worked closely with Sean Mulholland and Jeremy, the fire chief from Lebanon. And we communicated, we pushed again to the state and the FEMA. And we received word last week that Grafton County has been added to that FEMA declaration and we will be eligible for reimbursements. So I'd like to thank them for the extra work, movement to work.
Thank you.
Just so you know, the old chipper is listed on Options International. It will be, that option will be ending November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. DPW worked with Upper Valley Regional Planning to host a stormwater workshop. We had twenty people in attendance here at DPW. And that workshop has been recorded and will be released in the future for, for viewing for people that want to watch it. And then you may see some changes around town. Casella is changing all dumpsters in town to front loaders over the next couple of months. This is to increase their worker safety and efficiency of their programs. That's my town manager report.
Does anyone have any questions for Ed?
One more thing after questions. I can take questions.
Just, I think, just for the, it's great that the program for mental health in the place is going so well. I mean, our other emergency services groups have access to that as well.
They do. I mean, they do do debriefings and those types of mental health things. The chief actually brings in a psychologist to do one-on-one with the police department funded out of his budget. I don't, you don't do that.
I had a problem and I believe the announced response is required annually to do a mental health review. General, well, main, it's not an in-person, but it is an onboard.
I would just encourage that to be available to any staff, obviously, if it needs it or feels even. Yeah, just would like it.
And then full-time staff, we do have EPA or EAP resources that.
Right.
That make that available.
And for the benefit of both who always ask, EAP is employee assistance for free.
Then the last thing I wanted to pass this around, we got the painting back that was restored. If you remember, it was torn and tattered. And I think they did a, a very good job. They actually gave us a little bit of a discount, food came in, but we're unexpected.
Pretty good.
What?
What is the significance of that?
It was donated to us. That is the original Shakerbilt Bridge.
I can give you a little bit of history on it. It was really interesting talking to the guy that did it. And it was donated to the Select Board and they accepted it under the auspice that they would repair the painting and display it. It lived in hiding for many, many, many years. And it came to my attention that it was here. It was still, as I said, tattered and torn and in pretty bad shape. So it came to the Select Board and they ultimately decided that it was accepted upon the, the auspice that we would repair it. So they decided to spend the money and repair it as they said they would.
If you scratch that bad boy after.
So we did that when I took it to the, the art professional. He was, he could really quickly see it. He looked at it and said, you know, because of the type of canvas, those types of things that it was on, it was a kind of early century traveling artist that had come through and painted that. And somehow probably gave it to someone or sold it to someone here and stuck around town. Don't know too much more about it, but you know, it's just a traveling artist that came through. I'm sure we'll hang it somewhere in one of our new buildings when it's done.
Thanks.
That's the story on the painting. Wanted to make sure to show you guys now that we got it back.
Yeah. I'll pass it on.
And that is all for town managers.
That's all for town.
So we're going to move on to the business of the evening. The energy committee update will not be happening. We're going to be rescheduling that. So let's go on to authorization to enter community nursing contract.
So I didn't send you guys anything, but as you know, the committee's been working really hard at, at doing some fundraising. We've also been working with Jim Wheatley and the town of Lebanon to kind of shore things up and make sure everything's in place. And I have finished negotiating a contract with him and writing it that's beneficial for both of us. And as we stated in the public hearing, that I would come back before the Select Board before entering any formal contract. It is a one-year contract, which is covered and we have the funds to pay for that one-year contract already without using any taxpayers or. I don't know that I need a motion, but consensus at least to, to go ahead and move forward.
There's funds in hand. That was the, I was concerned.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you guys want to do it by consensus?
Works for me. It's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't want to sign it. It's a one-year contract. The little thing I took out was a termination clause. They usually have those in all contracts, but since it's a one-year, we don't really need it. And I told them, you know, they're, they're hiring someone, so we have a little skin in this game too. But over that, we did that and we had a, a maximum cap on costs. And they'll be providing community nursing services next year. We'll see how it goes.
I think it's appropriate to thank that committee. They really worked for a long time to bring this to fruition and came in very organized. So nice job. You can pass that on to them. I believe you're the co-chair. Are you? Yes, thank you. Let's move to authorized use of CIP funds for the purchase of a tanker pump for the fire department. Come on up to the hot seat. Join us.
I'll just stop by saying I'm as surprised to be here as you probably all have seen me. But after having attended a number of meetings with other departments and hearing their stories, I felt obligated to bring it to the CIP. And now to the Select Board. Some of the, some of the things that have brought me to this point is, one, the length of time it's taking to get equipment. But probably one of the bigger pieces of it is 2027 vehicles are going to be required by EPA to meet a new emission standard. EPA has said what the standard is, but manufacturers have not been able to come up with a plan of how to accomplish this. But they have come up with a price that they think it's going to cost to do that, which is in that thirty to sixty thousand per truck unit. The, the tanker, if you have, if Ed had sent the, sent what I had put together out, the, the tanker is a ninety-eight, not an eighty-nine. I had, I had put that incorrect incorrectly. The engine five is a two thousand. The plan would be to have a company build a pump or tanker so that we would still have the two thousand gallons of water, but we'd have a twelve hundred and fifty gallon pump on it. So we would be doing a two-for-one replacement. Again, reducing the fleet, reducing maintenance. You know, and, and again, I, I keep going back to that EPA emissions requirement. The last change that they did to emission requirements was when they went to the death fluid that needed to be added to the, to the engine to, to burn, you know, in the equipment. And it's probably taken, I'm going to say conservatively, three to four years for the kinks to get worked out of that. I don't see this probably being any less time. So with the three-year purchase, you know, build period to purchase period, the window is fairly short in still being able to get a truck that would not need to meet the twenty-seven requirement. Because right now being twenty-three, three years out, we're, you know, kind of, they're saying they can guarantee that we would get a truck that would not need the twenty-seven emission requirements at this point. But probably, and then again, and I'm guessing, but going with what they were saying, you know, that three to four months, five months down the road, the switch is going to be tripped there at some point when everything else is being built is going to have to be probably waiting on an engine and waiting for that emissions requirement. The other part of the plan would be that this truck would be in the public safety complex, the new public safety complex in, in the place of engine five in that, you know, in that bay. We just have more people responding from this side of town. It would leave engine three, the utility three. And then seasonal equipment that would be swapped and rotated out of, out of the Enfield Center. Again, it wasn't the intention to be looking for. Again, it wasn't the intention to be looking for a new truck, but. I think, you know, I felt obligated to do the due diligence on it, to do the research, to bring it forward. Um, and, and pass on and let the appropriate boards make the decisions. Of, of how to move forward. Um, I, I wouldn't, if, if the town is not able to do this at this point. You know, we, we will still continue and it would not be my suggestion to move forward probably. For three to five years with any new equipment until other towns had. Proven the new emission and had the problems with it. And for the town of Enfield, quite honestly, not to be a guinea pig town.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, that's.
So before we move forward too far, I think there's another couple of points of information. Fire apparatus has been increasing about.
About ten percent across the board.
Cost and they're not expecting that to change anytime soon. There's such a demand if there's three years out. That it's, you know, costs are going to continue to shift up for a while anyway. Um, and then, you know, I. I know there were some concerns and when the last fire truck was purchased, it was, you know, we're not going to purchase anymore for quite some time after this. I sent you guys an email today. I don't know if you got to read it before tonight, but um, you know, we really. We really should look when it's time to purchase a tanker at purchasing one that's NFPA certified and not a. Recycled milk truck or fuel truck or something like that, because you know, they do have their challenges and dangers. There's some liability there for the town for not using an NFPA certified fire truck and it's. Something we should look at and it also concerns me as a manager that we only have a couple of people that can drive the truck. That we currently have, because it's.
It's a, it's a standard ship, seven speed. People, people just aren't learning to drive standards anymore and we're all getting older that can and do drive it. Um, and I, I, it is a concern. I mean, Saturday, we had a call mutual aid. We went to Granton on it. They had a propane leak. They had a truck that backed over an underground tank. But long story short. You know, we ended up having to wait probably about twenty minutes to get the right people into the truck to be able to take, to take that truck to go mutual aid. And whether it's in our town or whether it's mutual aid, it's, it's the same. It's the way, the group of people to drive that. And I don't want everybody driving it. It is a specialty.
Need to be a truck driver, basically.
You need a truck driver and, and. It's not the same. I mean, the DPW here now in C, New Hampshire CDL allows you to do a automatic only CDL license. Um, means you can't drive a standard and a lot of the CDLs are that way and a lot of people. In the trucking business have only automatics.
The other point that convinced me quite frankly is that the engine is an American La France, which is a company that went out of business in two thousand fourteen. Um, so trying to maintain a truck that was built in. Two thousand is going to be very difficult as we head forward.
I think from a safety perspective to like, I don't think, it's not just that we're trying to avoid emissions requirements. Those aren't the problem. It's the problems that.
That's the, that's the small piece of it, but it is a large piece though too, Kate, because of what this is going to add.
Well, it's the cost and it's the fact that you, like you said, the guinea pigging problem is every time they do anything with emissions. The guinea pigging is pretty immense on engineering side. Uh, I wouldn't want us to do that and I don't think from a safety standpoint. It's worth, worth it. Um, you know, just looking at the information about the baffles and. Uh, I know that we've, uh, you know, it's, we want them to have a safe braking and stopping and turning. Ability, uh, in addition to being able to drive it in a timely fashion. You know, no one wants to spend money, but I think this is a wise move on.
I would recommend, and I know there's some other people that want to talk, but I would recommend I did put a motion in the packet, but I. After thinking about it a little more, I would recommend a purchase this large. We hold some sort of public hearing just to let people talk about it. If we don't move it forward into the future.
Thank you for that question.
Yeah.
This retrofitting conversation is because I might have missed it. We currently have vehicles that are retrofit.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The tanker, the tanker was a built tanker. It was made as a tanker. This wasn't a truck that had been. You know, a milk truck or a fuel truck. That was the, that was how the old days that you do it. Somebody would get. Done with a fuel truck, you wash it out and it becomes a fire department tanker.
Yeah.
This was a built tanker, but and I will say this fearfully, but. The tank on the back is a milk tank. Okay, it came from the Midwest, it got put on to the chassis and got put together. The NFPA requirements, um, the truck has to have a lower center of gravity now. It has to have baffles. It has to have rollover uh, sensors and protection. Because of all these years of these trucks being built this way, being built from the old oil trucks and the milk trucks and so forth. We've been, everybody's been very lucky and we'll, you know, we continue to strive to be safe and.
I don't need anyone knocking on wood about our emergency.
Baffled tank is concerned.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you get the water surge and washing in there.
Right, yeah, the physics of it is, is a question.
And that's why there's very few people that I feel comfortable in driving it, because I know. That they don't put their brain in a glove box and they drive, drive as they should.
Is that the truck that was rolled in the past?
No, no, that's the American.
That's the American.
That's the engine.
Yeah, so we have a history of stuff that has. Gone over sideways, so there are some feelings about not tipping over again that are very valid. That's my nice way of putting it.
We don't want to, but we are looking at selling these to someone else.
Look, that is their, they're gonna, they're in charge of training their team.
The one thing that came up very briefly, uh, at the tail end of that meeting was the possibility of. Liquidating the American La France truck now as opposed to waiting for two.
I have, I have, I mean, per- personally as the chief, I have no, I have no issue with that whatsoever. We have two engines and we have mutual aid. Um, I have, I say that without any hesitation.
As its price, its value is only going to go down as it ages because of the manufacturer.
So very good question, good point. Um, so do we want to schedule a public hearing?
I would say that.
Are you comfortable with that?
Will that delay the purchase in some way? I mean, or.
Couple of weeks, maybe.
That's about all.
Start an RFP even, that doesn't mean we have to bid it.
I don't want to delay the ability for us to close on.
He has, he, he's given me that month, six weeks window before he would start feeling uncomfortable. With saying that he could guarantee without the new emissions. I mean, his hands, the, the, any, this is only, this is only one. You know, person that I have talked with as far as getting, getting information, getting specs. Not as far as the requirements, but on the truck itself.
Yes.
And if we did it at our second select board hearing.
Yeah, November twentieth, uh, is that a time when you guys are all going to be here, smooth a quorum? That is a Monday. It's the Monday of the week of Thanksgiving.
Oh, yes, I'll be.
Yeah.
Let's do it. Thank you for bringing us to.
Just from a CIP standpoint, um. It's not going to be that far off because. We're going to be paying off one of the new fire trucks in twenty thirty one. So at least that gets us, we're talking this in twenty twenty seven, twenty eight, so it's not that far off. I will tell you right now, though, there's going to be CIP issues in the next few years. And one of the biggest reasons is to put it, to put it down there quickly. Cruiser used to cost thirty five thousand dollars. It now costs sixty six thousand dollars.
Whoa.
Yeah, and that's not, and that's not fifty years ago. That's five years ago.
And I think we couldn't have predicted that kind of.
Yeah, so the nickel may not be a nickel in the, in the near future. Um, because inflation on these vehicles are honest night, like people see with copies, I mean. You know, eight, ten percent per year.
That's crazy.
So.
Yeah, and we're seeing that across the board. Trucks similar to the one we bought for around five hundred thousand are now over seven hundred thousand. Ladder trucks are one point seven, not that we're planning on getting one of those, but they used to be, I mean, not that long ago, they were million dollar trucks.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, when it went from seven fifty to a million, everybody gasped and now, you know, you've added another. Almost half a million on top of that and. And the length of time for delivery for ladder trucks, I think is out to, uh, you know, five years. It's just.
A lot of people are dealing with this issue right now. I had a very similar conversation with a guy from Wisconsin when I was at ICMA. And they're talking about a fire truck they were not planning on buying and having the same financing type talks we're having. I'm trying to save some money and. It's really hitting the industry hard and they're expensive. Everything's going up.
I think we've been very diligent about reviewing our CIP plan. The model it was founded on is a good model at the time and. Really how it works uh, has changed significantly just because of the way the economy has been, so. We're just going to have to revisit it and ask ourselves, now, what do we like about the model? What can we? Unfortunately, it's expensive.
We'll have to look at it. I don't think we're doing anything.
No.
Really big this year. We did add one third of a payment for this fire truck in case it goes through and. As of right now, on this year as approved as the IP plan, we'll be spending in cash three hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. More than we're bringing in, so. Which is all right. We can do that. We just can't do that too many years in a row and the future's looking.
Yeah.
It's a little expensive as well, so.
Now, leaving with Ed and I'll grab him from him tomorrow. You're probably going to have to reach one. No, you're not going to get out of here. Thank you very much.
So you can stay for a minute, see.
I can stay for a minute?
The next items.
Yeah.
Buildings.
The building projects. Yeah, perfect. So if there are no questions on that, let, we're going to go ahead and move on to the building projects as, as it says, so you have. Plans in miniature, which John needs his glasses for and I need them for just as much, um.
I do.
Take us through them.
So, yeah, we'll start with the public safety building, so you can leave if you want to. Just really wanted to bring these forward to the select board to let you, let you see what we've been working on, where we're at. Both planes are. Really moving towards the final plan stage and you're not going to see a lot of changes in them. Moving forward, so I wanted to bring them to you. We gave you the. Color cover copy that doesn't actually mean that that's what the color is going to be, that's what the architects have put together. Um, we will be having some of those discussions, so if you guys have any. Have any information or input you want to put in, we'll definitely take it and we may be coming back to you anyway for final color choices.
May want a pop of color.
May want a pop of color.
That's the siding, that's the yellow.
I was gonna say, that's the flag.
That's the yellow.
The flag will not be blank gray. And the wood siding, we have been talking to them about that we don't really want natural wood because of the maintenance issues and stuff that come along with that.
So it will, it will pop some color.
Yeah. Looking at that, if you, if you look at the floor plan, it's, I don't want to say it's similar to the last one that you guys saw, but. Um, the few things that were really downsized were a little bit of the office sizing. Some of the offices are really big. We downsized those to a. More normal office size, if you will, and then the community room was downsized a little bit to, to save some square footage, but. Other than that, I think if you look through it, it's pretty similar in what is in the building that came from the original and back. And just layouts have changed around a little bit, those types of things. Little bit smaller locker rooms that we put in, we separated them so the police locker room is isolated in the secure area. So they can keep their equipment in there and then there's a small locker room for fire and staff. Um, one of the things we did do, if you look at the fitness room in the back corner there, we made that in a way where it's into a hallway. That can be accessed by staff that can use the. The bathrooms, the shower area in the locker room and the, and the fitness room. We thought that would be a great for permanent retention tool. Not only for fire, police and ambulance, but for employees in general. In working with that, Chief Holland's been working with Primex, our insurance carrier, who hasn't given a dollar number, but said that they would be interested in helping. Fund for that room because of the wellness of the employees that would happen, so. With that, the only other thing we did, we did put an extra office in there, kind of across from the fitness room, if you see it, that can be. Used as a bunk room or an office. It's just a kind of a spare office at this point, but we, we designed it that way on purpose. And then this building is also designed in a way where the fitness room wall there can be pushed back and added on to fairly easily in the future. With that, we went through a bunch of iterations, but this is what we ended up with. If anybody has any, any question. We continue to work through MEP issues. I mean, that's where a lot of the money hang up and, and different things are. You guys may have hear some concerns about that with secondary propane boilers and all these things going on. We continue to debate and talk about those. Um, one of the big things we've been talking about lately is. They're saying we need an emergency decon shower in here. We're questioning that a little bit right now, but that emergency decon shower. Is the need for the extra boiler that they're putting in because the code says that it has to be immediate temper water. You can't even use like an on demand. And so it'll recirculate warm water to that shower all the time and. Pretty big increased cost, but we've been debating a little bit because we're not really using any hazardous caustic type substances in here. But there may be a few.
Other folks who are building right now running into this as well.
I think we're going to continue debating that and figure out if we can get by that code or not. I think we probably should have an eyewash station or something. But I think the code will come down a little bit on that, so.
We're not using anything in house that from what I've been able to find that would require the deluge. Emergency contamination shower. I just want to make sure they're not confused with. Our gear, decant, decontamination versus an emergency decant, decontamination.
They're saying no.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not convinced.
Me neither.
Not convinced.
We'll keep talking about that. This, this project is on, on path right now to start early spring. Do some groundbreaking and get the project underway. As you guys know, we completed the purchase of the Shanker Hill Granite Land. That's been surveyed, lines are delineated. I didn't print out. I think you have it in your packet, but um. The actual footprint of how it sits on, on the line. We'll be doing that. We're looking at working in DOC, so the fire apparatus would come out of the bay right onto Route Four. And then when they came back, we designed it in such a way that they can pull in behind the building, pull out on the ramp. And then back in without having to go back on Route Four to back in.
One of the items that we briefly touched on in our. Uh, facilities meeting was to name the facility and I asked that the select board, not at this time, but on planting the seed. For a future discussion as to what you would like the facility to be named.
And I can bring a couple of things over like that. They mostly just did it on some signs out there, but it was pretty basic. Feel public safety building and feel public safety facility, public safety facility.
Anyone want to give us like a few million? Have their name on? I, I went to private college, where they take money for these things. Someone wants to give us a few million. But I'm not joking.
Not a joke at all.
No, no, we need, we, I mean, it's in all seriousness, if somebody happens, you're totally sorry. I just had one question on the public safety facility. I think I posted two before. The locker rooms have a door and I wondered because they're unisex, right? If it wouldn't be smarter to just have it open to the quarter so that you.
We talked about that.
I, I don't know how you guys feel and if there's anything, but you're not going to be using it for changing anyways, or you have full size, which I like. anything, but you're not gonna be using it for changing anyways, or you have full size, which I like the self-contained bathrooms. I think they're very flexible and, and probably a much better choice.
We talked about the main one in that hallway that would be the I guess fire and staff employee one that we talked, me and Bill talked about not having a door on that one. I don't know what the police chief will want and is, but it is on the secure side.
I was gonna say, they're on the secure side. I think it's a little different for them, but for this one, you know, anytime you can have a more open space, um, and not get into gender issues of any kind. Whatever you think is best is just. Do you guys have questions?
No. Good progress.
Why are we doing groundbreaking business?
I wanna be in the town.
That one will be I'm gonna say more of a normal groundbreaking. I'm sure it will be out there in the spring and we'll put shovels in the ground, throw dirt, take pictures.
Or we can push them a little bit, a little saw up to ground.
Shovel some snow.
Shovel some snow, why didn't?
Be out there with a tent, space heaters.
Yeah, 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 we wanna push it, but.
Put a fire truck on.
Just like one of those mat, the heating sauna, it works well. Nope, I think we could.
For the chief, you can leave if you want.
You can stay if you want.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go see if there's any damage left. Thank you.
Well, see if there's gonna be fires, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're hoping for no fires. We hope you get us a dinner.
And then for Whitney Hall, um, I printed out some brackets today. Again, you have actually one iteration before this, but there are still gonna be some changes to the Whitney Hall, but we're moving toward very quickly. If you look at lower plan one, which is the first one, this is the bottom, the town hall area. The only part I really don't like in this is when you come in the main entrance, which is a little square that sticks out beside, they made a a bathroom with a bathroom vestibule. I think that's an access issue and a little bitty closet and they cut our kitchen down. So I'm gonna ask them to move that back where they just had a bathroom and a closet that entered down at the lower lobby area. And then it gave us room for a bigger closet and it made the kitchen a little bit bigger. So we'll probably go back to that, but other than those changes, it'll look a lot like this. Um, one of the things we designed, if you go to the right top corner, if you will, there's the meeting room. There's a handicap bathroom and then it also gives access to that kitchen and that whole area can be locked off. So if someone wants to use that on the weekend, we can give them a code to that door and they'll have a meeting room, bathroom and kitchen facility. Thought that was a great, great use of community space there. Then we just have our basic, you know, town manager's office, bookkeeper's office, deputy town manager's office. Assessing, one of the changes we made there, if you look at that, is they are in the lobby, so that'll be quote unquote, reception and assessing. Um, the last plan that went to town meeting had an actual receptionist office, which the way it was laid out would have forced us to have to hire a receptionist. This way, we don't do that. Um, Julie said she's more than well, more than happy to do it, but then she's also retiring in two years, so she volunteered the person after her to do it and to be the receptionist, but we did purposely make sure that there was a two-window desk there, so if we ever needed to transition to having someone that can focus more on just reception, that they can use that space as well. With that, the one thing you'll see that's missing from here that we have now is recreation. Um, I think Kevin at this point, if he is planning on just using kind of the open meeting space in between those, maybe a little cubicle, we have some ideas for possible better space for recreation, but on the far side, on the other side, the original Whitney Hall building, there's also a couple office spaces that are available for expansion, so we could always use one of those if needed. If you look at that side, we designed the clerk area to pretty much take up where the town office spaces are now. There'll be four different clerk windows in there. There's a secure storage place, which is Elisa's office now. We'll close that in and that will be the clerk's secure storage. Um, one thing you will see on here is the lurid vault is not on here anywhere. We learned talking with Red Loaf that NFPA vault standards are extremely stringent and extremely expensive, so we did some research. We talked with the Secretary of State. We talked with the Clerks Association. We talked with a lot of people and nothing in our vault is vault worthy, if you will. Everything calls for secure storage, so we're, we're talking about building a couple rooms, the historian vault across the way and that one. Well, Elisa's office is pretty much brick walls now anyway, so it's pretty fireproof, but if it's not a fireproof wall like that, we talked about just double drywalling it and increasing the fire resistance of that, so. Looking at those, we did move the historian's office a little bit forward, so again, if we're not around and she wants to meet in there, it's easy public access and the, they come in, the public will come in that side right to the elevator shaft and stuff that's there. One thing we did do is a cost-saving measure is, um, we're keeping the elevator shaft, elevator room and stairwell that's there now. Those are really expensive features in a building to build. And being able to, to keep those shafts and those stairwells. Um, the other thing we can do by doing it this way is we can keep the elevator o- operational during construction and we don't have to go back to the state for a whole new certification and elevator permit, so. Um, we did talk with Stanley Elevator and we'll probably talk with some other elevator companies, but they can do a full refurbished retrofit of that elevator and make it like a new one, so. It's a, a pretty decent cost savings there. And then, other than that, we just made some office spaces. We made some storage spaces, but we asked them to make them like offices, so if we needed to use them in the future and so that's where we're at on the, on the downstairs. Flip the section two, um, again, a little configuration from what we put forward before, but I think the library has all the spaces that they had before. If you started to the left, I'll just go fast. They have a, a family bathroom, a stor- well, storage area, family bathroom, a teen room, and then the stairwell configuration. You can see we did need to put this little area of refuge in by the stairs. Um, one of the issues we were running into in the first couple iterations, that was open and people could access the library at all times, even when they were closed. So putting this little area in there, there's a door that they can lock. Um, new circulation desk with their offices in a very, well, I don't wanna say similar spot to where they are now, because it's down, but it's still in the middle of the library. Then if you turn right, if you come out of the elevator, you go into the adult section, which has some reading spaces, some stacks to browse books, tables, and then the computers there. And then along that outside wall, far outside wall, you'll see there's a big meeting room that they can do program space or host some meetings in, and then there's two small meeting rooms that people can use for you know, people that work at home can meet with someone in there or use that business space. So we think it's good. Um, Kate was pretty happy. She likes this layout a little better than the last one. Gives them good visibility through most of the library. Um, I think it'd be impossible to get it for all the library and then she was really happy that it divides the adult and children's section, which increases security in the, in the library. The one thing we do plan on doing is the front of Whitney Hall, the kinda call it octagon shape, but it's gone and again, the little bump out there. They're gonna make sure to to keep all that ornate woodwork and the pocket doors and that, and then that's where they're gonna put that Willow's Nook. That was a donation for the children's area, so. That's the library. If you go to, they call the second floor planning. This is really just a big meeting space that we can put some proper technology and things in. What I envision this as is a a multi-use space, but also a great place to start hosting select board meetings, planning board meetings, some more formal meetings up there. I think there was pretty good consensus that we would not move elections back there. The people are pretty happy with the community building, but um, we have that there. We have some storage, a couple bathrooms, and then the small meeting conference area in the front as designed in the original M back committee to take use of that nice little room in the stained glass windows up front, so. That's really what it is. It's flat roof over the new portion of the building and then that flat roof will be used to house the heat pumps and the utilities, so they're not hanging off the side of the building or sitting down, which will help the aesthetics of the building. Few points of interest, maybe. I think it was part of the original plan and we continued to stay with that, that the slate roof will be removed and replaced with asphalt shingles. Um, it loses a little historic character that way, but we've got a lot of trouble finding people that can actually come and repair slate roofs.
And sell those.
We can do something with those.
I don't think they'll come down in one piece. The reality is the, it's a huge expense for them to remove it and slowly lower it as opposed to what they probably want.
That some of them will come down in one piece and if you give it to somebody, they're gonna sell.
Oh, absolutely.
Been that, the libraries talked about using some of those for donor appreciation stuff, making something out of them for.
I just hope they have it hauled away by a company, because they'll, they'll sell it.
Or like if anyone in town makes white shingles for their roof.
Like you. You can buy a couple.
Be there on the right day.
I know, just like tap that and be like. Yeah, no, I just, I, it's one of those things that they are, they do have a resale value, uh, and so I hate to see them just cart it off.
We'll definitely look at that. Um, then the other thing is they're going back and forth on the second floor windows, the big ones, but they have made the decision or we made the decision altogether that all the rest of the windows are gonna be replaced with new energy efficient windows that have the historic look instead of trying to refurbish the old windows.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. For the most part, it looks like it's gonna be fully spray foam, a little bit of maybe dense back cellulose, but you know, a, a really good envelope and good insulation. As good as we can get in the old section for two by four construction. Which is kind of amazing that that big building is all two by four construction, so.
Is what?
Two by four construction.
Really?
Probably a restaurant, which means it's a full two by four.
Yeah.
It's a real two by four.
Real two by four, that's what my.
But it's still a little unnerving when you open the wall and it's that big.
It's totally normal. We're used to that around here. Um, I, when you say
The roof insulation.
The new, new windows, are you, they're your internal grids that look like, so we don't spend a six billion dollars? Or are they doing twenty-three or twenty-four?
Not a hundred percent.
Okay, no, I'm just asking because it saves a lot of time and money. I know it's not as historic, but then you get into like who's replacing the grid. No one will ever accuse me of this sort of conservation issue.
Well, it's pretty, very exciting. Still very excited, but, and I think it's great work building on what's already been done. I'll, I'll just, there's sort of almost as an aside, the only, the only sort of disappointment I had was the removal of the land use officers from Whitney Hall. I really sort of viewed them programmatically, just like you know, public facing staff members and if, if there's any way to get them there, I'd really love to see them.
We can look at that. There's been debate over that.
Yeah, and I disagree with that.
And he knows that, and that's why. As I said, the three people down here say that they work together all day, every day with driveway permits and building permits.
They, they have some very valid reasons for feeling the way they do. I, I'm just saying, I, I view them as public facing staff members.
We kept them down there till we had to downsize the building and you're going, you're back out there.
So I, I would love to see them there. I think they meet with the public a lot. They're as important public facing staff as anybody in.
I, I think on the flip side of that, I said to Ed, I see there's some intrinsic value in getting the public into here so they don't forget, so that when we have something that we need to do here, they stack the roof and, and that work that they don't forget that this building isn't just a shed in the woods somewhere.
Good point. There's good meeting space, fortunately, so if you remove the excuse for them to go down there and spread out a little bit and.
There's certainly ways to work through it, but that, that also is people come in to talk with a land use person about potential development in town. It presents us in a better fashion as well.
Uh, yeah.
You know, there's, there's all sorts of different, yeah, different angles to it and, and no, they do, they have very good uh, reasons for why they like being here and working with folks here directly all day, every day and.
As we've moved more towards laptops for individuals too, I think, you know, the ability to plug and go in different buildings and be more portable and, and do some kind of remote style work is I, I think it gives us some extra flexibility on where you are and how we work and I'm a big fan of just-in-time workspaces, so. I know during COVID, we discovered that we like having walls more than we knew before. But I also like the idea of being flexible and our expectations of where people, because I do like, like you said, the, the front facing, when they're meeting with somebody, having everybody go down would not be a bad thing. Do you guys have other questions? Is there a comment?
No, just, uh, congratulate everyone both so far. It's looking good. Very exciting. I like it. Golden was maintaining some of its character too.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank Elisa and Julie for all the work they've been doing. They've been holding the ship afloat while I've been running back and forth a lot every day.
Thank you. We have a tip committee application and I'm, it's, is it lines? I was properly introduced and I'm still failing to pronounce copies, so that's in your packet. She is the owner of North York Country Times.
Yeah.
So, um, and is requesting appointment to the tip committee. I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept this application and approve it.
Motion a second. Any questions?
I just have a question because I don't know. So to be a member of the committee, you don't have to live here. It's okay. You just do business here.
Depends on the committee.
As long as you own the property and she owns the building, that, that her business is in.
It's designed to have some residents, but also some just business owners who may not be town residents.
And, but that's a specific to town.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, it, it only applies to town.
And you have to have a certain percentage live in town.
Right.
In the district.
Yes, they have to have a certain percentage owning property in the district.
Yeah, owning in the, okay, I'm sorry, then, owning in the district.
So like I live in town, but I don't live in the district. So I count as a, so I don't count as a living in the district person for that particular.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a motion on the table to appoint. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? It passes unanimously. And policy review, personnel policy, health insurance, oh my goodness, health insurance premium addendum agreement.
Okay, well, um, the share that the employee pays for health insurance, um, a few years back, it was proposed by Ryan Alesworth to increase one percent a year until we reached twenty percent for, um, those with a family plan when they were hired after April first, twenty nineteen. So this is, um, I believe the fourth of five years to get there. And this is included as, and then in the back of the personnel policy, so we don't have to fuss with the contents of them. But now that we have the insurance plan selected and renewed for coming here, if the select board wants to continue to increase the shares, this would need to be adopted so we can add.
That's really all, adjust the employees portion that they pay by one percent.
And do you feel like this is still advisable?
Yes, I think so. If it's moving us toward what commonplace is, if I look across the state, most places are doing an eighty-twenty share.
Any other questions from the board?
That was my question.
Okay, we'd, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve an increase of one percent in employee health insurance premium shares as presented effective January first, twenty twenty.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes unanimously. Thank you. And on to acceptance of donations to community nursing program trust fund, three thousand five hundred fifty dollars in aggregate. I'd entertain a motion to accept the thanks.
I move to accept the donations of thirty five hundred fifty dollars in aggregate with gratitude and thanks.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes unanimously. Thank you. Looking great. And we'll read the total pledges. It's forty eight thousand seven hundred seventy five dollars in donations and budgets to date. Acceptance of donations to Moscow Lakeside Heart Trust Fund, one thousand dollars. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept the donation of one thousand dollars with gratitude and thanks.
Wait a second.
Second, or in house concerned.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes unanimously. Thank you. Don't keep going, slow down. I'm just checking my notes. What are we doing?
Yeah, we're. Um, before we move through that, I did talk about the, the tax rate in my town manager's um, report. I do have the tax warrant here to sign so we can move that forward and get tax bills printed. I don't know if the, the select board had any questions or wanted to discuss that further or if we just leave it in here.
I'm fine with signing it. How do you guys feel?
I'm good with that.
I've, I've, what, can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Just the tax warrant. We have it prepared based on the tax rate that I talked about during my town manager's report. I can't remember the, the, oh, December twenty first, looks like the date that they put on there for when taxes will be due. They'll get out now and maybe because here's the Christmas.
But they're going out, uh, this is nice to get it out earlier and not so close at least.
Yeah, there's really no good way to do it. So you either do it and it's due right before Christmas and you have to pay your taxes or you get a green envelope and feed your Christmas and it's your tax bill.
Send it now and give people some time.
Send it out.
So we have it prepared for you. We'll have it in the yellow folder to sign.
Here or in the town office?
Right here.
You're really pushing hard here.
Do you want to send it around while we do public comment? And may I borrow your pen? So I don't have a bright little signature. I'm high maintenance tonight. So uh, we are going to move to other business to come before the board of selectmen public comment. We have two members of the public in front of us.
I'm good.
You're good. Hi.
Hi, uh, my name is Aunt Jolene and I'm representing one of the construction consultants. We sent a proposal for the Shaker Boulevard Bridge.
Okay.
Well, I was just wondering if you have any comments or questions at all you can offer.
No, Jim Taylor, our DPW director is working through that LPA process with reviewing those and leave any information you want. I'll make sure he gets them, but I know he's working through that process of.
No, it, it was more like, you know, general questions. If you have any questions about the process and, and those kind of things.
Think we're good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I need to keep passing because I'm sorry. Okay, and then do we have any questions or comments from folks online?
Not for me.
All good here.
Name Shirley, what's that? So, oh, is Shirley?
You go. Or you close, I will.
I saw Shirley on mute, but I can't hear her. So I think we're passed. All right. And yes, you had something to add?
Yeah, I just, based on what she said, we have two projects right now that are going through what we call the LPA process for the federal and state government. We've both had a little bit of concern about that. We usually bring forward RFPs to the select board to be authorized before we move forward. But this process is very in-depth, working with the state, federal government for approvals on everything. So I'm pretty sure we're going to end up going through the process, choosing a contractor, awarding the contract and then coming back to you to either ratify that or let you know. But um, one of them's the Byway Trail Programs. I went through the two RFPs we got back, entered into a scope and renegotiation with Pathways Consulting. And like I said, it's a lot of back and forth and federal approvals before you can actually say, yes, we want to award this. So by the time we get there, we're going to be so deep in this process that it's pretty much happening. But the Shaker Bridge one is the other one. That's the same way. We, I, I think five companies bid and they're going through interviews and scope and fee with the state right now to, to award that bid. So um, just so you guys know, we're not trying to sidestep the select board to do this, but it's such a complicated process to move through it that.
Well, from my tax, technically you have to come here and get it awarded before we go down.
By the time we go through the process, it's pretty much awarded. So we'll let you know.
It's too big of a list.
I just have a quick question. Um, collection summary, on the judgment assessments. I, I'm assuming based on the percentages that maybe they're not due yet, so that because I see both the even and the odd are twenty four and twenty two percent. Which would be both sensitive.
It may not be. We've been doing a pretty good job of making sure that those are, are up to date. I do think we had one that was really lagged behind, but the Lakeview condo association is very helpful. If I contact their president, he said they have some tools and pressures that they can add. They often implement those and will get a few checks in mail and get it caught up. So for the both parts, they're caught up. They're not very far behind.
Yes, it looks like one and two were, were fault. That was, so you should have enough in the way we lay out those payments to be okay.
Yeah, and we're, we're actually ahead of our payment schedule on that. We're doing quite well and I will say Wendy's on top of it. Anytime someone seems to fall behind, she's in my office. We're, we're getting on top of it. So she keeps us well informed of where we're at on those. I mentioned that we're, we're staying on top of it.
I see they started the final abatement at Shed Street. Do we have a schedule on when they'd be done and when demolition might occur?
Um, they're working on that. Last week on the asbestos abatement, they did find some vermiculite at the last minute in the red Shed Street building. So they were taking that out, getting that prepared for demolition. Liberty Utilities after today. I don't know the exact schedule, but sometime this week, they're disconnecting power to both buildings. And then Hammond Construction is going to be taking down the, the red barn and the two older sheds behind there. Doing some grading across the property and then the brick building will be sometime later next year, but probably.
Brick building, you mean the red sided garage building?
No, the, the lower building.
Oh.
That'll be the last one removed. That's the most expensive one. And since we didn't have enough money this year, they're going to be doing that at some point.
Are they going to try to do any grading this year or wait till the project's done and then do the grading?
I think they're going to do the upper half of it now, but that's kind of up to them. I told them to get done when they can get done for the amount of money that we have and that will give them the rest next year when they complete the project.
I think it would be nice. I know it's hard to grow grass this time of year, but if they were able to see once the snow goes up and actually opens up pretty well and goes into the ground, just thinking about this still going into the waterway potentially. I know it has to travel far, but we know that they run down into keeping it so it's not going into the river.
See if that's a part of the contract.
It's going to require them to put up a soil fence anyway. They're within the distance from the river. So state is probably going to, to read the requirements. They'll probably be required for the soil fence. To do in order to, at some point you'll regenerate the RFP that was out there originally for select board review.
And we'll discuss how we're going to move it forward.
Do we have any other items to come before this board? If not, we have a, yes, go ahead.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, on behalf of the community nursing project, um, there have been inquiries to the timeline for the establishment of the committee. So for public purposes, if we could just review the timeline for when a committee might be established and when committee members may expect to apply for appointment through the select board.
That's on an upcoming agenda, but more than likely this committee will be formed to start it.
Good question. Thank you. So feature of item? Okay, um, I would entertain, don't run away yet, guys. I would entertain a motion to go into a non-public session in accordance with RSA ninety one A, column three, Roman numeral two, um, over parentheses, small c, parentheses.
You couldn't read that just to be all the right up on?
I always read the whole thing in case somebody wants to, someone wants to come for my head later. Oh, no. No, I don't remember.
I second your motion.
Okay, so we'll give everyone a minute and um, who's, are we just taking? We need, who's staying, who's leading? That's what I'm saying.
You guys.
We're staying. Who's taking the minutes? Sure, I think you should stay.